To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unbed, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the note of the record, we do not have the forums, so we will be basically keeping on information tonight. We've scheduled a special meeting later today. This is for these patients. Yeah, I'll call please.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
And Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
The Saginaw Media School District by presentation. Kevin, you are on.
All right. Very good. Well, thank you for having us this evening. My name is Kevin Dobson, Director of Finance from the Saginaw Media School District. This evening I'm presenting to you the 2019-20 budget presentation. The purpose of this presentation this evening is to show you the budget with regard to the general fund, in particular for which when you have the forum, you will have a resolution to approve or disapprove based on the presentation made this evening. Some of the other areas I'll be covering, we'll include the Special Education Fund, along with a couple of the other funding sources. And while we don't have to present those, we are choosing to as courtesy and just to show you in a little bit more detail how we utilize some of the funds that come through the ISD. So some of the ISD funds that we'll probably touch on this evening, general fund and the Special Education Fund, of course, the two main ones. We have, of course, this year, the CT fund, the millage, of course, that passed last year. And we'll touch on the Cooperative Education Fund, Headstat, early Headstat. And then we have the Cafeteria, the Department of Time, the Capitol Projects, and these shops on also. For the purpose of creating the budget for 2019 and '20, there were some assumptions made with regard to the expenses. Salary levels were based on the contracts that we have and of course considerations for upcoming contract negotiations. We have updated retirement rates. They've increased from 26.18% to 27.5%. Health insurance perhaps did rise. By the time this was created, they'd used 1.9%, because that was the same prior year. The actual number came at 2%, so very, very close. Staffing in Millet and Transition Center, for anticipating those staffing levels to remain the same, of course, that will be dependent upon student body. But we anticipate the levels remaining at the current levels. And the PA-18 payout will remain at the $250,000 as it has been prior years. And that is based on a formula that was created about five years ago, so no changes there. On the revenue side of things, we have not included an increase based on property tax valuations, because we're not anticipating property values to raise. So we're keeping that part of the revenue source at the same level. Looking at the continued cooling interior and staffing costs, the average FTE cost. What that means, I'll just give you a little bit of detail on that, because it doesn't necessarily self-explain itself. What we do for our locals is we're providing services, and we have various service providers at the ISD coming in and providing services to our children. We have, you know, a new person who straight out of college may cost X amount of dollars, let's say, you know, $35,000, $40,000. But then you may have a more seasoned person who's been in the program for many, many years and maybe, you know, $60,000, $70,000, $80,000. Rather than billing the schools based on the actual individual they receive, we will instead blend all those costs and create a per FTE cost. And then, of course, we factor in healthcare and all those financial expenses, which of course would drive that number further. We blend that so that every school pays on an FTE basis, so it doesn't become the same cost per FTE. So that's what that we're first do there. No anticipated changes with Special Education utilization, Medicare is flat. And we, although the governor's budget had a 3.5% projected increase, we're only going with a 2% being conservative. So here we are looking at the sources of revenue for the general fund. Proceeded total revenues, $14,621,873. Total expenditures, $14,722,000. Projected ending fund balance of $2,788,290. You'll see there that there's a projected fund balance of 18.94%. Now, Dr. Stewart and the Board of the ISD do believe that is high. We would like to see a target of 15%. The reason why that is slightly higher than we'd normally look to inform is staffing levels. We've had vacant positions, which has meant we've had additional dollars in the budget. Hopefully we can get all those positions filled and we'll see those percentage drop off as the year progresses. Looking at now our expenditures by program. Early childhood programs, parenting services, you'll see is one of the key points here, instructional services, along with the technology services in Remse. Total expenditures, $14,75,696. So before I go into Special Education, that information I just gave you is just on the general fund. That's the consideration you'll need for any type of special meeting, if you want to propose a resolution. Moving on now, we'll look at the Special Education Fund. Here we have our budget here, $44,586,924 as a total revenues, expenditures, at right around the $45 million mark. Projected ending fund balance at $2,222,42. 4.93%, our target is 5%. So we're right there in the ballpark. Looking here now at the expenditures, one thing I'd like to draw your attention to, I'm just going to go back one page here. You'll notice here IDEA flow-through is the revenue, $8 million, which is shy of $4,000. If we go to the next page, you'll see IDEA grants to $7,500,000. Those are the dollars that we flow through to our locals. And obviously, that is based on the student count at each of the locals' school. Career Tentacle Education Fund, here we have the funds committed from the millage. We're anticipating formulaing in $50,000 from the levy, makes up 56% of the budget. And then, of course, the additional funds committed from the Marshall Plan. Total revenues, $8.6 million. Projected ending fund balance for the fiscal year '20, $6,4,565. And here we have the expenditures for the program. And then here we have a recap here on early childhood, this makes our total revenues of $50,884,356. You'll notice here we have the GSIP formula in here. GSIP was currently under Midland BSA, we're going to be bringing that in-house at Saginaw. One very key point to note here is that under Midland, they had an indirect cost rate of 10%, which they've been retaining for their management of those funds. But these funds under Saginaw Media School District, we're going to be utilizing an indirect rate of 6%. So the difference there, $240,000. So that's what we flowed out to the schools, so we'll be able to see and feel a more direct impact there on children in our communities. So just to, as a final note here, as you have your special meeting, if you're looking at the general fund for the ISD, see there's been a budget to approve when you have your resolution, the special meeting can use that. Now, if you guys have any questions for me at this time. Again, this is a very high level of view. If you have any questions, you'll figure each out, so we can help them all the time to see what the answer is. Thank you.
Kevin is, I hope for you guys, Chris Frank was moved on to a different position, and Kevin has taken over and set the ISD up in his own way, which is pretty cool. So welcome, four weeks in and already making presentations. I appreciate you taking the time to come on.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Good morning. Thank you. Those grounds, which is in your packet, we sat down on the night with our engineering firm, or I should say our construction manager, a friend of mine, a guest, reviewed roofing bids. See that the companies that we reviewed, both in and left, were not conform to the bid spec, so they were not considered. And we have a restraint, superior, combined. Had sort of a discussion of restraint and superior. And boiled down basically to, we do it within the, it's supposed to require timeframes as possible, that's why we wrote nothing that the bid be given to superior. Move that to action. Kind of somewhere I was always reacting. High school are trying to sound system.
Did you want to do the security camera door access control?
Oh, sorry, yes, absolutely. Thank you for bringing that back up to my attention. Phil, when you're up.
I'll set him up. These, this is Honor Security. Honor is the building grounds committee's recommendation for door access control, which, if you recall, goes back to the Michigan State Police grant that we were awarded. And also, security cameras, district one. And so the guys are here to, I guess, introduce themselves and give us a bit about what the scope of the project looks like and feels like, and what we will see over the next, at the end of the next couple of months.
Yeah. If you, in the front of your folders there is just some information about the companies, but right behind that are drawings. On the left side is the access control, on the right is the cameras. By the time we're done, at the high school, there's 12 doors, middle school, there's eight, elementary's five. But by the time we're done, certain doors will have access control on them, where you swipe your card to get in, so like the front door, when you came in, it just swiped your Bob or card, it'll have an automatic unlock, or you can, however you want to do it. But every, every single exterior door in the district will be monitored, so that you'll know through the software whether it's open or closed. Additionally, with the access control, if you're not familiar with it, with the card reader, the system is audit, you can audit at any time who went in what door, what time. The front door is still going to be scheduled open at the time kids come in. Additionally, on the drawings, the pink highlighter is an audio/video intercom. So that's at the main entrances of each school. So during the day, all the doors will be locked. If you need to get in, come to the front door, somebody at the office will let you in. So at that point, everybody in the school staff were able to get in with their Bob. And you can go back and see who got in. Kids are able to come in when you unlock the doors for them. And visitors are able to come in when you lock. Basically, the system is like that. Pardon? Hold on, sorry.
I'm Ron Hayes, this is Mike Hayes, he's our operations slash sales guy. A little bit about the company real quick, if that's okay. We started the company about five years ago. I've been in the industry since '99. When did you start? Pardon?
Ten, eleven.
Before we started the company, I mean, I've worked for large companies like Tazza, Kiphol's, ADT, a lot of local companies. And if we're talking about starting a company, I worked, ADT was pretty rich. And the way they treat customers and issues in the same way they treat many others. They're not concerned about the world, market, local companies, businesses that we do business with. So we had a couple of things from the beginning. One is open architecture, which a company like ADT, once you start using their security equipment, you can't change. You either expand that one, which is not, that's not, sorry. You have to continue what you're doing. So, yeah, so what we did is, in the systems that we installed, are the opposite, they're open. The RS2, which is the access control system, that is, last time we checked, there's about 30 or 31 companies that use the same hardware, circuit boards and things like that. They just sell the software. So we, fortunately, we never had to let somebody take over our system with another software, but we have done it in reverse. And it does work. Mercury boards, that's the circuit boards. There's tons of companies that use them.
The point is, on purpose, you're never locked into anything.
So if you ever got tired of Mike, you'll never get tired of me, I think. I'm very, anyways, so there are other options out there. If you didn't want to change it, a lot to secure. And with the intercom and the access control system that Mike was talking about, that allows the building to be locked. And nobody gets in unless they have a credential or someone in the building that lets them in. So once you have that set up, use it, schools are open, you know, for drop-off or pickup time. They're unlocked, circuit boards. But other than that, you're locked down in this area.
Yeah, that's the gist of the access control, but we, to that end also, we don't ask you to sign any contracts ever. It's kind of the same rules, the open architecture. You're not happy with this particular software at any point, we could introduce another one. You're not happy with us or some reason, there are other RS2 vendors, and Salient, which is the camera system. Of course, I hope they wouldn't ask you why you don't like us, but you're never locked into the equipment or us as a company, which keeps us on our heels as well, which is what we should be. Any questions on the access control, or how it works?
Just a, so clarification, the days of keys are going away. And we will have knowledge about open doors, closed doors. And I think most importantly are doors that are left to jock. And that happens, especially when it's hot out and we open doors and it's very possible to leave them open. And it leaves us vulnerable to security risks. And this takes, it gives us full control over those.
So physical keys, if people have this building today, would be available?
In time. We will move towards that. Many of the doors are going to have, they're magnetic, much like we have in the front, except for, right now we walk up and use a little key to unlock that door or unlock that door. So we won't have to do that. One advantage is, and Mike brought it up, when I said, oh, I gotta go unlock the door, I can do that from my computer or from my cellphone.
And I said, if it's done right, it'll be programmed beforehand, six months in advance, you don't have to work.
Yeah, we could program every board meeting in. And at what predetermined time, the door unlocks, so people can come in, same for sporting events. And especially, another area is athletics. It's in and out. And I think you guys know how busy that end of the high school is, as well as the back end of Katkins. This allows us to really get an eye on who's coming in and who's entering and exiting the building.
When the doors are unlocked, scheduled to be locked and unlocked, and then also monitored. The system, we have figured out who is going to go into the app, and the system will kick out, get alert, an email of the doors plugged open for a couple of long, whatever, long we determine it's set in itself. So that's the intention there today, so that you guys will know that all the doors are locked tight at all times.
Why don't we do power outages then? Are you going to have some sort of UPS that drives the courses?
We can, so the, the system is made to work without power for a certain, they have small battery batteries on them. If their network communication is down, everything is housed. Main software will be housed somewhere here in the district. But each building has its own brain, as we say, and that's all they have. Well, it's like main control board, it keeps all the information from the building essentially. So if you lose network communication, everything still works. Everything will still work until we don't have any power at the strike itself, in which case the locks are too locked, they're secure. So you can always get out with a pregress. If you total power failure, you know it's out for a number of days, the door will be locked. So there will be a couple of emergency keys that you, you know, a couple of people have to put. And then beyond that, if we want battery backup longer than that, it can be done, we have to cut that door.
So we had a power outage earlier this winter, because it's not spring yet, I'm not sure when spring is getting here. But we had a power outage, fire over, I think it was Wendy's, and it knocked the power out here. In the amount of time that we're out, we would still maintain security and door access through that power outage. One of the key things, and I want to touch on that, is it's, each individual is housed in the building, so we're not connected. So if a line is cut, our main trunk line is cut to an ISD or, we still have, we still maintain all of our data, we still maintain visuals. All of that still exists because it's housed inside the building, as opposed to, et cetera.
Okay. How long do you think it would run without power?
It depends on how it's used.
When did you know, so we're not around the buildings, we don't have power for very, very long, so when did you know, we don't have enough to buy the building, the power's out?
Yeah, I mean, it literally depends how many times a card is switched, because that's what's strong power. Let's say, maybe six, eight hours.
Not fucking data, is that?
No, not the batteries, that's batteries that are connected. We can either do bigger batteries to get an initial order before we can, so. I guess the first step, maybe how long you want to go, maybe just to get bigger, right?
Just trying to understand the parameters, I don't know if we redesigned.
For sure, it's not, it's not easy or not hard, change.
It could be added later if you need to.
Correct, and it doesn't make a difference if you add it and not one later, possibly.
This aside note, when they're talking about open access, these, the products that Honor has and Salient is kind of the base for, we're not locked into a specific camera. We could buy all different kinds of cameras, and it will work with the same software system. So I think that's a great advantage, especially down the road. We can add cameras, and we're not in a spot where only this camera works with this product. Personally, I like that, because things will change over time.
Any other questions on the access? Sure. Okay. The camera part, if the drawings on the right side, there is quite a bit of camera. But just so you guys can see what we're talking about. The first drawing of each school is the interior, and then right behind it is the exterior. But what Robert was talking about is the server and the software is, again, open architecture. All they do, Salient, all they do is make camera software, they don't make cameras. They're totally agnostic. If you guys wanted or needed any type of particular cameras, that's part of it, if you can. Another reason that we prefer Salient, I guess there's a couple, but they're American-based out of Texas, they build everything to order as we order it. And the biggest reason is that most of the other VMS video management software, most of the other VMS people charge recurring yearly licenses for every camera that you have on the system. Seriously. It's from the IT world, because they're connected to the network, and it's always been that way. Salient does not. They charge at one time, which is still up the A.S., but it does, it's part of the lighting of the system, which is awesome.
So when you say open architecture, we're really just talking about not proprietary gear that we're going to deploy and integrate, correct?
Correct. Additionally, the two systems will be integrated, the access control and the camera system. So, which, if you care at all, is really cool, the software is talk, it's not just a kind of integration. But so in the access control software, every time, it keeps a record of the events on the log at the bottom. When somebody serves a card, there will be an accompanying video clip. So when somebody says, that wasn't me that used my card, hold on one second, I'll just go right to it. Conversely, on the camera software, if you want, you can filter events by card reader events. So it's really cool, on the camera software, it's actually pulling events from the access side.
What about when a door opens, but it's not supposed to be open?
We can have that clip triggered on any door event. So card reader, when it opens, however you want to do it. Everything is accessible remotely. The question came up early in the process, there's a couple of ways to do camera software and access control software. Cloud-based is big and traded for, but we're here with every other product. We don't recommend a solely based cloud product, just because you're simply subject to the internet. So if you're not.
Well, it's not, you're independent, so you have to.
What's that?
You know, why do you, you're network dependent, so.
Yeah, well, and so, but this way you can do both. So it's actually housed on site. There's a license, it's there on license, but it's included, so that you can remote in. So that if there was a snow day or some emergency, Mark or member can get out from home and lock the door that was scheduled to be unlocked at 7:15. Same with cameras, you can access them if you choose.
I don't know the percentage of coverage we have right now, it's low. But look, when you look at the coverage that we're going to have.
It's essentially total, or almost.
Really extensive. And it also is external as well. And our playground areas will have coverage, external pieces of our buildings. And we have the flexibility then to grow and go farther out as needed. So I think that's another big advantage to what we're about to.
As part of this project, also, it just came up naturally, but it's also included to provide cable path everywhere. So we haven't totally decided on an option, because there's a couple different, but depending on the trace that we're using. But, so that is included, so there won't be exposed cable everywhere, it'll all be looking nice. It's intended for future use also, so that both data cables somewhere, we don't use the same pad.
And if you look at the coverage of the exterior of buildings, most of the areas have some coverage, at least two cameras. Or might be farther away, but.
Different perspective is what you're specifically.
Now, is image storage based on actual motion, so we're not sitting with, without, the old, so?
Yeah, so the storage calculation is a little bit complicated, because it depends on how often the cable array is reporting, which is hard to tell. The system will do both motion report or constant, depending on how you want to do it. We have it, as we have this back, you'll have at least 45 days of coverage. But the key here though is the software is so good, that even though you have hours of hallway coverage, when you're actually looking for something, it doesn't take that long. I guess we could have done a whole bunch of demo, but it's, it's really slick. It's as fast as you can get in the video you're looking for. Different ways to search. If you're looking for a specific spot, you can just draw a box in that spot, and it'll search for it, would really something happen in that tiny spot? Even though it was originally looking at motion. You think you... But it's...
Not to get too big, but at some point, I'm good in facial recognition as well.
What's that?
Facial recognition, that kind of stuff.
Yeah, it's, we have it. Yeah, so the cameras, there's two parts of it. The camera has to support it, and the server has to support it. Cameras that we have, I don't. Server we do, does. So if you ever wanted to add something like that, listen, you guys want to get super high-tech. There's cool stuff happening all the time, new products we just work about. You could have the doors unlocked, or keep the doors locked and have them unlock as kids walk up face on face. And you just got it on once at the beginning, and then it's, within seconds, it's like that.
I'm being the straight man asking questions sometimes.
So, but, so, so a part of what we do, though, everything that we're proposing at this point supports that. So in some cases, we have to add something, but you don't have to redo it.
License plate recognition is amazing, too.
You can, and then you can kick out alerts based on faces, based on license plate, you can whitelist blacklist, so if you said you, hey, we got so-and-so parent just pulled in, the vehicle's not supposed to be here, whatever. And all that comes as part of the code, part of the software. Well, so the, the specific one I'm talking about is they have a... We go, I just got back from San Diego a little bit ago, but this one, they have the patent on the facial recognition software, so it's their own software, but they take whatever camera you already have. Your iPhone, when you unlock it with your face, takes three hundred points, their software takes forty-five hundred. So like, when they do the demo, it's, it's impossible to defeat, they do one with a hat with glasses, with a swollen face, with a different, but it's...
Forty-five hundred points, approximately.
So if I grew up full beard, would it be able to do that?
Yeah. Well, but then, in that same stuff, the, the key for us is the same software in Androids with your access control, that's how it's able to unlock the door. You can deal with your staff. So my card doesn't work until that sees me, okay? Not my card, those are okay. That's also, it's all one thing, but it's visitor management, so you can send an email, I'm kind of in front of an appointment today. You send me an email, it has my temporary code in there, I walk up, pull it up to the reader, go to your office. All this stuff, it does that already, I mean, so it's not, that part, what we're proposing doesn't...
He doesn't like to talk about facial recognition, how much, how many points does the iPhone have?
I said that already, three hundred.
Because we got, you know, a company getting iPhones, he put his on facial recognition, and it, yeah. Anyways, it would work till like ten thirty, morning, because it's faces as well.
I think it was probably... I wear contacts, I'm sure. I would, you know, roll over the first morning.
Can I ask him, because I've got some past experience, and this is some stuff that with time, the market prices are going to come down on, I'm sure, but I...
For sure, it's, all the time, it's out of the...
So I'm simply asking from an integration standpoint, at some point in time in the future, if we found that technology would be a advantage to the administration, that the system will support that.
Correct.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be all updated.
No, I understand.
And I appreciate the question, but anything that we, should say, generally speaking, we try to present stuff that way anyway, it makes sense. We wouldn't, unless you said, hey, we want something to achieve, we wouldn't ask you to consider something that was outdated or wrong. Any other questions on the camera system? We're located on the center, right front way, hi.
Right across from Wendy's.
Mr. Waters was my wrestling coach heritage for a year before you guys stole it.
Yeah, you guys know, remember?
Yeah, he's still here.
I saw him at the walk-through. The fall for middle school wrestling.
He did coach in his class for one year, and...
Well, it was when, yeah, it was when Charlie sent him to the school. I want to say Javichelle.
Yep, thank you, that was a while back.
Yeah, I graduated from Chicago.
Mrs. Sation takes pride in recruiting Mr. Waters.
Plus the key, because he was involved, and we were really mad at Heritage, because they didn't honor our teaching ethic, which is part of the problem.
We turned the heat.
Well, but yeah, what, couldn't lay what they want. So no, nobody landed, but he was the best coach. Then I gave him that, because he was the best for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, for the, that and the president.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Very good.
It's a little long, we did...
I gotta thank you.
Thank you for all your time. Well, the lighting in the high squad auditorium is nearly complete. The revamp, so everything is LED lighting, and so that is really exciting to be able to see who's on stage now. And, but it also brings up, there's other areas of improvement that need to be made before that auditorium is fully functional. And Patty and I have worked with our vendor that did the sound system for the gymnasium, Simone. And we looked at this from a two-phase perspective, so that we could grade it in a little bit this year, a little bit next year. So phase one, that I guess we won't act on, but phase one is amplifiers, microphones, sound pickup. And use the existing speaker system that is in the auditorium currently. And so right now, as far as I'm aware, we have zero microphone connectivity in any of the ports. So this will be moving towards, we will have ported, meaning plug-in, as well as wireless. Very similar to kind of the wireless that we have at the gymnasium. And then phase two would bring in new speakers. And with phase two, there, they did a kind of a sound audit, because that is a circular room. And so there is some sound that needs to go back to the individuals that are actually on stage, so you can hear yourself when we're playing, or kids are performing. And then you, they're looking at, how does that distribute sound throughout the auditorium piece? And so phase two would be an adjustment of the, and an upgrade for the speakers, so that it is high, very high sound quality. So I'm looking forward to presenting that, babe. I don't know if you want me to talk about finances and why phase one, phase two. But Patty and I looked at the overall expense, and then looked at where we're at, and how do we move forward efficiently without just jumping all in? And so that's where we decided on the phase, with the most important thing being actually picking up sound right now, so that it is usable. And we'll use much of the amplification equipment. And then as we get to phase two, we would upgrade that with similar, it's actually less equipment. So a smaller box that houses the equipment, and then allows us to have wireless connectivity, projection. It'll be usable, and really something we can be proud of. To hold things like preschool graduation, which we will be holding on June fifth. And our band concerts, and our elementary band will be able to perform on stage in the very near future. And I think that, and be able to actually conceive their music, and they will be able to hear themselves, and we will be able to mic up individuals, and we will have the mic capability to pick up specific instruments. Or maybe Robin is over there talking, and we have these shotgun mics that pick up Robin's voice, because that's what we want to hear out in the crowd. So very exciting stuff. And our vendor, Simone, is local, and fantastic guys, and you guys have heard the Sound Gymnasium, which, that's concert level, the Sound System, and I am very proud of that. And I look forward to having an opportunity to do the same in our auditorium, and bring that back to life. What questions might we have?
I have a question, and I think this is a comment, I think it's a long time in coming, so it's a good thing. I personally have been attending the band concerts, and they have been the quieter instrument, the therapist, and we see very much in terms of, so thank you for getting those things addressed.
It's gonna make the kids feel better. It's gonna make them feel like they're really performing for the audience, that's important, because it looks like...
It's a game changer, to be able to throw, and even just miking a kid up with a wireless mic. We've done that in the gymnasium. It's, it might be simple in some situations, but it's powerful. Our kids are, they love it, and they are, they have tremendous talent that can't always be projected out to a giant auditorium without a sound capability, so...
How are you both able to come?
I think this, this changes the entire landscape. Very exciting. And, yeah, I, I guess, within that phasing, our curtains have been familiar. Now that there's plenty of lighting in there, some things are glaringly obvious that may have been missed in the past, and so...
So when I called Tammy, she did say that her and her husband were going to take care of her. Whoever they are getting them from, remember she said at a board meeting that she knew that they could get some? She said to tell you that they were taking care of her, whatever that means.
That's awesome.
Well, I interpreted as...
Her husband has some from someplace.
And he, he's in that world, and...
Got it from the palace, you know?
That's awesome, so there's some history in those curtains.
Hopefully that's all of them.
And they need to be aired out a bit.
Might be able to smell Bill under, and Rod, and sweat.
I don't think that's what he's...
My Lord, that's...
Thank you for that report. We can't do this off the agenda, the intermediate school district board of education, we can't do that.
The next one, the policy discussion.
Okay. I will let you know that Ruth did, Coppins did send me a request for support. I don't know either of the other two for the ISD election. We'll talk about that, that action, bid, policy, discussion.
We can move that one as well. To the next meeting, it's just an action, yeah.
Does that, does that come out as a preemptive action, or do you suspect that we're going to use this?
It's to set up so that as we do future bids, we add that in as part of the policy.
Anything else? Comments? Mr. Allen?
None.
It's in progress, good stuff, especially for the kids. Security's a big deal, and the auditorium stuff, and it's gonna make the kids feel important.
Just an FYI from me, Wednesday, Mark and I will be going to the NASB to talk about our strategic design process, just a little bit further. Get that timeline in the process, fire it up. Mark?
First and foremost, Donna Kraus, lunch, one of our food service workers. Tony Nagy, the director of food service, nominated Donna for her twenty-five years of service. And so Donna was awarded an award from the Michigan Department of Education for twenty-five years. We presented it to her today. We actually, I didn't, we had students present it, and it was awesome. Donna graciously accepted it, and I think it was emotional. Twenty-five years is a long time, she's seen a lot of kids, I can't even imagine, that count over the years. And the ovation the kids delivered was very cool. She's one of many food service and support staff members that have been with us a long time. And very, very cool that she had the opportunity to be recognized. Patty, ba-dum-bum, Patty met the requirements for the Michigan School Business Officers, CFO, which is the chief. Financial officer, so now we have a second chief, well, retired chief, current chief, here with Rich Pork.
Congratulations.
Yes, that's very cool.
So big things have come up in the last week. We've waited and waited and waited, and I appreciate your patience, and I appreciate the public and community's patience on the snow day. Process that's been going on with the legislature. So last Friday, the governor signed a waiver for the four emergency days that occurred, January, the last week of January. And that patience pays off. We, our, our community didn't have to worry, they may have worried. I know I had several kids asking me about adding days in June. And I think the legislature did a fantastic job. Especially thank our local legislature legislators, Ken Horn and Vanessa Guerra, for really hammering away at this, even though it took a long time, that's part of the process. But I do appreciate it. Additionally, for education, the, there was a bill that was in place that placed forty percent of an educator's evaluation on student testing outcomes. And so the legislature went through the process and, and is pushing that back for one year, so we're to what we've been experiencing, which is a twenty-five percent of an evaluation is based on local and state testing. And so that is good, as we also are under two different grading systems for our school district and our schools. So there's a lot of evaluation out there, and it's, it's getting a little muddy on what, what do we aim for? So that was a very helpful, I appreciate, and that, again, Ms. Garrett... So that was a very helpful, I appreciate, and that again, Ms. Guerra and Senator Horn played a pivotal role in that. I do want to highlight a partnership with NextTear, Senator Horn, and the MEA, with Bridgeport to pilot Book Access for All. So we are starting to build classroom libraries, based on Kobe Sharp and Donalyn. Donalyn is, Donalyn Miller is a guru in the statistical end, and Kobe Sharp is from Jackson. And he has really developed a very cool classroom library system. So Bridgeport, in conjunction with NextTear, the Michigan Education Association, and Senator Horn, will be piloting two classrooms at the elementary level. And so the, the kids get to select the books. NextTear supported it financially, and will support it with people coming to read the kids and, and help put together the libraries. The basis is, if I can simplify it down, a plethora of books, a sea of books inside of a classroom, that kids could pick up, whatever you're into. You're into zombies, there's zombie books for you. If you're into, you want to read about video cameras, or video, whatever, it, we will have these available. And by design, kids will have flexible seating areas, bookshelves that will house the books. If you want to take a book home, you're welcome to take it home. If you pass it around and it goes to a sibling or somebody else, it is what it is. The reading is the most important piece of this. It isn't about ownership. All of the kids in each of the classrooms that will do this, and I expect this pilot program to grow and really advance, the kids are picking up the books. So it isn't a teacher picking up the books, it's the students. They select the books, they participate in it, they are selecting flexible seating options, they are selecting, I, I don't think they're selecting the bookshelves, we've got that down. And then in conjunction with NextTear and Senator Horn's office, when we roll this out, and there's been some delays in rolling it out with some of the school, snow day things that we were going through, but is to have folks from NextTear participate in the rollout and the build with kids. Not that I go in, or anybody goes in and builds the shelves, the kids are gonna do that alongside with our partners in the MEA and NextTear and with Senator Horn. So really fantastic stuff coming down the pipe, looking at Bridgeport leading the way in some areas that I don't think have, we've been looked at for that. And so I'm excited to share that with you. The book is game changer, that they wrote, and we've looked at it, and we're gonna follow along with some of the things that they're doing. And maybe this becomes something that the state of Michigan looks at, just classrooms full of books, all different genres, not, the other thing I think that is important is if you want to read a sixth grade level book, because that's what you're into, that topic, and you're only in third grade, go for it. It doesn't matter where you test out, or if you're at a AR three point two, it's about desire and interest. And so we remove barriers and just say, go for it, kids. Have at it, enjoy it. And I'm really looking forward to watching that process grow. And so we'll invite you guys along when the opening happens and get this rolled out. And I really, I, I don't want to undersell NextTear. They have been phenomenal partners in not just this, just in general. What great, great friends to have for the district. Can't say no.
One last thing we'll order here. Knowledge that you sent this for you. So, she does, yes. Coming in on a wonderful job, a little bit.
How, how are we going to go about sending a special meeting?
Yes, that's a great question.
I am not available Wednesday or Thursday afternoon. I sent John a text, he has a response, I don't know whether he's there.
Can we do tomorrow evening? Anything meeting well? There's some things that I would move around to make this happen. But anything more than eighteen hours out would be perfect.
So seven o'clock tomorrow?
I'll make that commitment, that we need to have at least four here, right?
So let me quickly text Tammy and Jay.
I can do Wednesday evening as well, too, so I'll send that before.
That's fine, Wednesday evening, but I can't. Can we do Wednesday morning before late? Maybe?
Or, yeah.
When would you finish leaving?
Leaving here around eleven thirty. I think that would be tough, though, Tammy, for extreme day, right?
But you're available?
I'm available through, through Wednesday.
Okay. And you're only available Tuesday?
No, I can be available Wednesday evening as well. I, I'll be out, I won't be available between noon and four.
On Wednesday? And Dawn, you're on Wednesday?
Or Monday morning.
In the morning? So Wednesday at six?
I'm, I'm candidate.
We, we, we won't be back by that time.
So that's the evening is out, that's enough.
So maybe Tuesday night, Wednesday morning, because grind out.
So we know Tammy works during the day, though? So...
Well, we need to either have Jay or Cheryl. Cheryl works second, right?
Right. I think first choice, let's see if we can do tomorrow night.
Fine.
Worst case scenario, we're flexing for Wednesday morning, would be ideal.
Yep.
So Tuesday at six is the first choice? And Wednesday, what time?
Saturday.
Ten.
Thursday.
I'm advancing again on Thursday, going for the partnership.
Okay, so Thursday doesn't work.
Thursday doesn't work. If we can get tomorrow night, that would be ideal.
Makes more sense, it seems like it's more flexible.
Let's see what we can get. As soon as they respond, I'll post.
Very good, thank you. Very good. Can you advance those?
Eighteen dollars, just eighteen dollars, so...
Okay, all right, we're good.